12, 2012 Salina City Commission Meeting to Order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Angel?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Householder?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Shirley?
Here.
Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance in a Moment of Silence. It's the first time for the Citizens Forum, if there's anyone here from the public that wants to speak on any issue not on today's agenda, come on up to the podium. Seeing none, we'll move on to awards and proclamations.
Item 4.1, Resolution Number 126879, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Brett Lyon for his employment with the City of Salina from July 1st, 1984 to March 16th, 2012. Item 4.2, Resolution Number 126880, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Jack Goetz for his employment with the City of Salina from October 29th, 1973 to March 15th, 2012. Item 4.3, Resolution Number 126884, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Richard Colvin for his employment with the City of Salina from July 2nd, 1970 to March 15th, 2012.
Is there a motion to approve these resolutions?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolutions 12-6879, 12-6880, and 12-6884. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Is Mr. Lyon here today? No, I understand Mr. Goetz is here and Mr. Colvin is here, is that right? Is Mr. Goetz come up? Is it working today? And I just have to point out, I don't know if everybody caught that, but it's from October 29th, 1973 to March 15th, 2012. So, I'm going to present you, Jack, with this plaque for years of service to the City of Salina. We really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
And, Richard, where are you? And Mr. Colvin has worked for the city since July 2nd, 1970, and I'm fairly certain that is before a couple of these commissioners were born, Richard.
Not me.
So, here's a plaque, expressing our appreciation for your service. Do you have any... We do not have any public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so we're on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of March 5th, 2012. Item 6.2, award of contract for the remodel conversion of a basement storage room at the police administration building into a women's locker room to bust boom and raw in the amount of $62,790. Item 6.3, Resolution Number 126888, authorizing agreement for a community-wide recycling feasibility study.
Does Commissioner want to remove any of these items from the consent agenda?
I would like to remove 6.3.
Removing 6.3, is there a motion to approve 6.1 and 6.2?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with Items 6.1 and 6.2, as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda, Items 6.1 and 6.2, removing Items 6.3 for further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. And 6.3 is the resolution regarding community-wide recycling, so I will toss it over to Mr. Frazier. And, I was actually going to remove this as well, I just wondered if you could go into a little more detail. Looks like you reference in here the venture grant funds, I wondered if you could go into a little more in-depth explaining where those funds come from and what they're used for.
Sure. The city charges a fee of $1 per ton for landfill waste that's taken, or take, or waste that's taken to the city landfill, and that goes into an account that the city holds, and that we have a balance in there right now of over $400,000, $436,000. That's money that's used typically for venture grants that we've given out in the past that deal with diversion, recycling, reuse, and so this is a good use for that money. We've discussed that with the Solid Waste Management Committee to get their recommendation, they support the use of those funds for this purpose. The City Commission authorized staff back in August to be able to move forward with a feasibility study, and not to exceed $80,000. We put together an RFQ, sent that out, we had a number of firms apply, we broke that down to three that we interviewed, and then we scored those groups. We brought in the group that had the highest score, SAIC, out of Austin, Texas, and that we negotiated with them for a contract. That amount that we would be paying them is not to exceed $76,430. In addition to that, we wanted to add to the scope of services for the project, and not the consultant, is to work with Fort Hayes University Docking Institute to do a telephone survey. That's an additional $3,500. So, we were able to work with both those groups to get the total project cost under But, the project would be concluded sometime probably September or October of this year, and that during that time period, we would be able to review the different elements. There'd be the review of our current system that we have, the development of alternatives and options, and the collection and processing of this type of material. There'd be a workshop, there'd be meetings that we would have with stakeholders that would provide information from the community, and from different businesses that are in solid waste management right now, of how this might affect them. Final presentation would be made to the City Commission. So, we're looking to probably put together a pretty comprehensive survey that would culminate in a final report and presentation September or October of this year.
Would they be looking also at commercial customers as well as residential?
We don't really have commercial customers, so this would be just residential.
Okay.
I'd ask to pull it off the consent agenda just because I'm just not in favor of spending $80,000 on a feasibility study in recycling. We already have a recycling program, and I just see this as a growing expense for the taxpayer. I think the program we have now is pretty good. Sorry, Mike, I just, I just want, my vote will be nay.
Commissioners, to give you a little bit more background, the recycling program we have has a limited amount of folks because it's based on like a single truck. It came out of a pilot project. I think there's a cost about, what, $5.50 a month, roughly?
$5.15.
$5.15 a month to participate, which is actually moderately high, and that's because of the limited number of folks. When you have about 18,000 residential households and you're limited to 1,000 or less in the program. And that's all that program was expected to be, was a pilot. And this comes out of really the interest of the commissioners in the past to look at recycling, and quite honestly, it's more complicated than we have the ability to look at, because we're not just talking about how you collect these things, we're talking about someone who understands the markets and the market impact and can deal with that side of it, and really the processing of the recyclables and whether, because we currently do not have processing capacity in our community, so there's a lot of aspects of this. And in the end, it very well could impact even how we pick up trash, not just recyclables. So, there's a lot of aspects that go into this, it's kind of a multi-dimensional thing. If we could do that internally, we would, but we truly just, that's not what we do, we're more operational, we simply can't. So, if we're going to take a serious look at true curbside recycling in some form, we really need to have outside help to do that.
And, within that, we've discussed in the past, but this study, if I read all of the attachments and exhibits correct, a lot of people that have lived in other communities that are used to curbside recycling programs have like a big cart for recyclable and a small cart for trash, and we're kind of opposite of that now with the very small recycling cart, and they have collection centers within, or sorting centers, and distribution, and try to find the most feasible means of handling it cost-wise. All of that, from what I read, is part of this study, where they would be saying, okay, if you did that, then there would be a sorting center, and it's, here's a cost estimate, and a processing center, and here's a cost estimate, and this is why these are feasible and these are not, and it kind of lays out the whole cafeteria plan. Is that correct?
Yeah, there are a lot of, you're correct, there are a lot of factors and different approaches, whether you co-mingle, whether you don't, whether it's curbside, whether you want people to take them and put them in dumpsters that may get contaminated, there's just so many factors to that, and those, that exactly, those are factors that would be included and analyzed here as well.
And, can you, how much does it cost taxpayers to close and open one cell out at the landfill?
Hmm, that's between 1 and 2 million, isn't it?
Well, I think we, I think we spent about $1.2 million on a cell, but it was, it was a little larger than we've normally used in the past.
Yeah, so you can probably figure somewhere close, I don't know, close to $1 million per cell on average maybe each to close and to open, and it depends on the size of the cell. So, it's fairly expensive. And, part of this too, we do have to bring in the financial aspect of that enterprise function at the landfill into this as well, because if we, if everybody recycled it at 80% level, then we have to figure out a way how to operate that, and can we scale down in the proper increments? It's all about increments. It's not much different than if you, if you cut tax dollars at a school, you can take, some of those costs are variable, but some of them are fixed, you've got to figure out how to deal with the fixed. So, when you have a person on a big scraper, how do you do that? So, it's not to say you can't, but you have to look at that. So, there's an impact there as well, because we want it to be financially viable. And, you know, quite honestly, the more you recycle, the more you keep refuse out of your landfill, the longer your life of the landfill, that's a very, very good thing, but that means your revenues are lower too.
Your revenues are low.
So, in the end, yeah, all that kind of comes together, and we have to put the value on that. And, we talked earlier in a, on a different topic about balance, and certainly this one would cause us to look at balance of all those things. So, there's a lot of cumbersome factors, some of them are operational, some of them are capital, some of them are financial, and it's having somebody who really knows what they're doing to come in and help us work through that.
Quite frankly, at this point in time, we just don't have the ability to tell somebody that is used to anything other than the pilot program and images here in Salina, somebody that comes from another community, and says, "Why don't we have this?" We don't even have the ability to say, "Well, because from our study and our landfill analysis and everything, it will cost the average taxpayer $15 a year."
Right.
If we move towards a more recycling-based program. We just don't have that ability to tell them that.
That's correct, and one of the emphasis with prior commissions was to try to create a means where there's more of a financial incentive to recycle than not to, and that can work for a while, but if 70 or 80, well, once you get past the 50% mark of people actually fully recycling, then you have to, your model starts to be turned on its head financially. But, that is something we feel is important, because we'd like to get there and then figure out how to transition the model after that. But, rather than say, "Well, if we, well, if we believe as a community," and that's a question in and of itself, "But if we believe as a community that recycling is really good for us, and curbside is the most, probably the most efficient way to really do that, to get the higher numbers," we have to, well, right now, you have to pay your $5.15 to do that in addition to your annual or monthly refuse fee, whether it be at the city or a private hauler. So, there's not a huge incentive unless you really like to, because we limit it to about 1,000, it's $5, a little over $5 to do it. It's not a huge incentive, you have to really want to do that. So, as a community, if we want to really incentivize that, we need to work on that financial model and operational model, and this takes you through all those aspects.
Does it not mean that at some point in the future, we may have to have a sorting facility?
I think it does, and I think they'll address...
Is it going to be paid by the taxpayer?
Well, and part of the, maybe, part of the, part of this is to say, "How's it going to be paid for?" Because, I think, there's no question, we get to the end of it, if we say, "Well, we can do this, but, the city's going to have to come up with X dollars, and you can't find a way to make it financially break even." That's a big policy question for the commission. I'm hopeful that you can do that, but it all depends on a lot of things and a lot of market factors. But, we don't have a facility. Another option is to transfer the recyclables to a facility, and that'll be costed out as an option as well. So, there's a few options in there, but I've told Mike, I said, "I know we're not in a position to put capital dollars towards, or anything significant towards a project like that, so we really need to see what comes out of it." And my hope is, is to be creative, know what they're doing, and can help us find a model that works financially. I don't know if they can, but that's why we're asking.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Is there any public comment on this? Come on up, give us your name and address, please.
I'm Ken Ritz, live here in Salina, run Images Recycling, have for many years. I'll, to address first the point about what the landfill costs the taxpayers, if my understanding is correct, that's the, that enterprise is self-funding, so the taxpayers are not paying. This is business of what does it cost to open and close a cell, or whatever, is really immaterial.
We certainly pay for all the employees out there.
But, their wages, are they not covered by the, by the fees?
Yeah, what it is, it's fee-supported, but it all depends on how you look at it, tax versus a fee, but it is citizen-supported through the fees, so you can interpret that.
Citizens are paying for it.
The same as the trash service, which, and that's not, that's, it's kind of silly to be like being concerned whether enough people were dying to keep the cemetery paying. We certainly aren't interested in knocking off more citizens so that we can balance the cemetery budget, and we shouldn't be looking at damaging the environment in order to, that's hardly promoting the public welfare, to make the world less livable in order to have some numbers balanced. We can let somebody else do that. A simple point I would like to make is this, recycling is not only feasible if it's done properly, and very efficiently, which, we do it properly, but not very efficiently in our operation, it costs less than the trashing alternative. And that's been shown using an approach that I, I think is a dead end, it's referred to a single stream, communities where they have the small trash container and the large recycling bin where you throw everything. That approach is as close as Hutchinson, it's as close as Salina. Waste Connections out of California, which is either the second or fourth largest waste hauler in the United States, owns Salina Waste Systems. They currently have at least one pilot program in Salina using the approach that, that has been implemented in Wichita and Hutchinson. Waste Connections operates out of Wichita, they also purchased Stutzman's, which was basically the largest trash hauler slash recycler in the state of Kansas, has been, well, in central Kansas, excluding Kansas City area. They use a single stream approach, they're very proud of it, so far they believe it's working, they're able to sell the materials, so that's, you know, your hot dog stands successful if people are buying your hot dogs. Whether they die after they leave is their problem, but you're selling hot dogs. So, anyway, the notion that, that need to spend $80,000, $76,000, whatever, to find out what the alternatives are, is not true. I would be more than happy to run through with you. I not only know about the markets, I've been in the recycling markets for, going on 30 years, and so I, I'm a seasoned veteran, worked with brokers who've been at it for generations in the paper recycling industry. So, in any event, I'm not speaking against having an outside consultant, that's up for you folks to decide, but I think it's very important that we, we look at possibilities. I'd be glad to show you what I've had on the drawing board, and I'm hopeful of being able to show you an actual, I don't know whether to call it a mock-up, or a prototype, or whatever, within a few weeks, that would demonstrate how you can use your current truck to serve between five and 10 times as many households as you're currently servicing, very readily. That, that truck is being badly used, although used the way they're used around the country. The world doesn't recycle properly, and I think I know how to. The shame of it is, I've known that for 20 years, and I haven't done much with it, but I've done some things, and I'd be glad to show the commissioners out front of the building, we can pretend we're a household, and I can show you the handoff, what I refer to as the handoff between each level. And that's the key, and that's, that's what we have to focus on, that's what any material processing industry focuses on, is the handoff from one level to the next, whether you're talking a coal mine, or a wheat field, or whatever. But, I think that amount of money is excessive to what you really need to start with. I think you could get an outside consultant for $10,000 to give you the lay of the land, and then see where you want to go from there. Or, you could do it for nothing. I'd be glad to point out alternatives. Waste Connections, I know would be happy to have their Stutzman's people, with whom I'm personally acquainted, have known them for, I don't know, 15, 18 years, something like that, to show you the single stream approach. I believe in having material sorted at source, and I'd be glad to go into why I see that and what I think needs to be done to make that workable and easy for people, go into some contamination issues, that sort of thing. But, yeah, but in any event, it's high time that the community of Salina, you're sitting on a gold mine. We're treating trash, well, we're treating discards as though they have to become trash, and as though they were a liability. Some are. Fluorescent light tubes are a good example. Cathode ray tubes in computers, definite liability. There are a number of hazardous materials, but there's a lot of this stuff, what's, you know, what's a newspaper going to do to you? What's a plastic bottle going to do to you? What's a glass jar going to do? Why do we look at these as negatives? They're raw materials, they just need to be redirected, that's, that's all. And, it takes some doing to do that. But, this, this whole concept of trash is this bugaboo. Trash is what we make. A glass bottle is not trash, but if you mix it and break it and combine it, you've made trash. So, it's the difference between Mount Rushmore and a gravel pile.
Thank you, Mr. Ritz.
Anyway.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
You know, I'd just like to add this in there, a lot of what Mr. Ritz says is true. I, a few things. One, I've said it before, I think our tiny little cart and our requirement upon the citizen to then find tiny little containers inside our tiny little cart, in which to separate what, what the average household generates in that cart in a day, is a program that has, has cost a lot of money, and is somewhat of a farce from the people that have used it and then backed out of it. So, I think we've found from our community that there, that there's the interest there, and we found one thing that doesn't work, and I think it's time to find the solutions to what, what do work. I haul of all of our stuff down to Images, but we've found the perfect containers to do it with, and about every two weeks, we fill up an entire vehicle and go down there. I'd like to ask Mr. Frazier, if you, during the request for proposals, did you have notion or belief that there were corporations, agencies, consultants out there that were ready, willing, and able to go to work for $10,000 or something like that, that Mr. Ritz had spoke of?
No.
Thank you.
And, and that's really, and even if they're, if that $10,000, I think he was really referring to just maybe one part of it too. I think this is a much more comprehensive look than just the trash. I would agree with Commissioner Jennings that I think we need to expand our, our recycling program. I, of course, also agree with Commissioner Crawford. I hate spending money, and consultants has always been a bad word for me, but when it does come to a project that's maybe beyond the scope of our well-paid city employees, but truly beyond the scope of them, I think we do need to look at outside sources to make sure that we are going to do it right, and we're not just needlessly continuing down that road of this small bucket, you know, and, and I think we owe it to the citizens to look at recycling, and, but the plan is much more deep. It does look at what, how do we offset the loss of that revenue by recycling at the actual landfill itself too. So, I'm going to probably err on the side of safety, that a consultant is going to maybe help us out in this way and probably support this.
Well, if the, if we can pull in more than 800 people, or I think that's what it is, around 880 or something people...
We, currently, we have 850 being served by one truck.
And so, you have, you know, when I think of that in terms of whatever our population is, 46,000, 48,000?
About 20,000 homes.
I would hope $80,000 feasibility study can solve the problem, but I doubt it, but...
Any other discussion or debate?
Well, I'd like to, before I make the motion, I'd like to thank Commissioner Crawford for requesting it be pulled so we could discuss it, and pulling an important item off the consent agenda. And, to that, I would like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 12-6888, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a community-wide recycling feasibility study contract.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 12-6888. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I think that's a reluctant 5-0.
Reluctancy noted.
We don't have any development business, so we're on to administration.
Item 8.1, Approval of Supplemental Agreement Number 1 for the Wastewater Treatment Plan Capital Improvements, Capital Maintenance Improvements Project Number 102843.
Ms. Tasker, we haven't seen you for a while. Nice to see you.
I've been fortunate to have consent agenda items, but this one didn't fit into that category. Thank you. Mayor and Commissioners, the wastewater treatment plant maintenance improvement project is currently being completed by Walters and Morgan Construction on a cost-plus-fix-fee method. This is the second project that we've completed with this means of payment. The first was the repair of primary digester number four, and the not-to-exceed estimate for that project was $135,000. We completed the project for slightly over $35,000 with a substantial cost savings. This current project was budgeted through city staff for approximately $805,000. We negotiated a contract with Walters and Morgan with a not-to-exceed amount of $725,445. We're nearing the end of that project, and we've projected the final cost to be roughly $575,000. We think that's an upper limit, so we see savings on this project of roughly $140,000. When the contractor estimates these type of projects, he has to include some risks or items that you really can't see. We're removing gates and concrete and roofs, and a lot of times, you don't know what you need to do until you actually get that removed. So, typically, they'd include costs for those type of items, and what we see here is, we only pay for the work that they actually do, and not for work that they thought might happen. And so, this I see as a win-win situation for both the contractor and the city. The contractor gets to do the project, make a fair profit, and we get to reap the benefits of the cost savings, not paying for work that they didn't need to do. And, basically, when we do these projects on a cost-plus, this is one of the pay requests. It's very detailed, we have a chance to look at, I would say, every penny that's spent, and all of the labor that's done, so we have a fairly good review of the work that they do. The wastewater treatment plant was put in operation in 1993, and it's reached 20 years, which is typically the design life for a treatment plant. Unfortunately, each year, we find a few more things that, that wear out. In 2011, one of the screw pumps has failed, it's, we'd replace it, similar to the work that we've done in this project. An additional roof has failed. Also, the waste gas burner concrete support settled and created piping damage. When we look at these projects, we try to look at which items should be repaired or replaced based on the major project that we have planned in the next three to five years. So, depending upon if it's of structure, we'll reuse, we'll do a replacement, otherwise we try to repair it to, to get by for that timeframe. We asked Walters and Morgan to provide not-to-exceed costs for those three items, and they provided a cost of $133,000. items, and they provided a cost of one hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars, which is somewhat less than the savings that we have seen on the first project. In addition, we asked Walters and Morgan to provide not-to-exceed cost estimates for two items that we have in the two thousand and twelve capital improvement budget, replacing two more roofs at building one and building eleven and doing repair and rewire of the ultraviolet disinfection building. The not-to-exceed number they provided was one hundred and thirty-seven thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. We had a hundred and forty-five thousand in our capital improvement budget. The supplemental agreement that's attached would basically revise the contract price of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars to eight hundred and forty-five thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. This would include all of the work in the original agreement, the additional items that failed in two thousand and eleven in the twenty-twelve capital improvements. In addition, the contract completion time would be revised from December thirty-first to December, December thirty-first of two thousand and eleven to December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. The lengthy time is due to the pump would require somewhere between four to six months to be delivered. From the standpoint of the budget, the original contract price was seven hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars. Add on the hundred and forty-five thousand from the capital improvements project, it's a total of eight hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars. So, basically, the cost of the supplemental agreement is roughly twenty-five thousand less than the funds we have available. Staff has offered three options for the city commission to consider. Option one is approve supplemental agreement number one for the wastewater treatment plant capital maintenance improvements, project number ten dash twenty-eight forty-three from Walters and Morgan Construction Incorporated to revise the contract price to eight hundred and forty-five thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars and the contract time to December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. Option two is not to approve the supplemental agreement, and option three would be to model, modify it as you see fit. Staff recommends option one. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have on this item.
Any questions?
Those pumps can't be rebuilt at all, or you mentioned there's quite a time lag between getting this other one.
Actually, what's out there is this. We call it a screw pump. It's like a large grain auger, roughly forty-eight to fifty-four inches in diameter, and the internal parts have got to a point where they're not welded together. If we replaced it in kind, it would roughly be about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. In today's world, the new way to replace those is with the submersible pump that's eighty thousand as opposed to a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Perfect, yep.
What are the additional items that failed in two thousand and eleven? Is that equipment failure, or is that?
The, one of them is the screw pump, which is, I, screw pump A, we call it. We just replaced D, that item, and then a roof, and the concrete settlement and the waste gas burner piping are the three items that
Okay.
have occurred in two thousand and eleven.
We like to keep that waste gas inside the pipe, you know? Whatever it takes to repair that, yeah.
The waste gas were, actually, is gas that we don't need anymore.
Oh, that kind of waste gas, okay.
We don't need it to heat the digester.
I'm just curious if anybody has ever before has ever not approved a repair to like any sewage or anything like that.
I was going to explain the waste gas burner, because that is kind of a questionable item, but basically, we flare it, we burn it, as opposed to
Sure.
letting the, the smelly odor escape.
Escape.
So, we, we waste it efficiently.
Keep the midnight fire burning. Keep it all.
That's correct. It is a flame.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't even know if I want to ask if there are any other questions. Too much information.
Your tax dollars at work, yeah.
Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Well, I would gladly approve project number ten dash, or submit that we approve this, ten dash two eight four three.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the commission approves supplemental agreement number one for wastewater treatment plan capital maintenance improvements, project number ten dash two eight four three. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes five zero. Any other business, Mr. Gage?
No.
I just want to mention, I have a letter here from Brenda Davis regarding our deputy city clerk, Shandy Wicks. And, I just want to publicly congratulate her. She's just been awarded the designation of certified municipal clerk from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Took four years and a hundred and twenty hours of education to get that designation. So, I just want to recognize her and congratulate her on that. Commissioner Jennings.
Well, it's my honor at this time to make a motion that we move into executive session for twenty minutes to discuss confidential data relating to financial affairs and trade secrets of a corporation for the reason, reason that public discussion of that information would competitively disadvantage a corporation and that we reconvene here at four fifty-five PM.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that we recess into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes five zero. Do we anticipate any action?
We do not.
Okay, we're in executive session.